All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everybody, welcome. First thing on the agenda is a presentation from Kids Castle Phase Two group, Rachel Ford. Good evening Rachel, welcome.
Can't tell. Alright, so thank you for having me. My name is Rachel Ford, I am the chairman of the Friends of Kids Castle Committee and I wanted to give you a little bit of an intro to Phase Two and let you know where we are. So, it was just about a year ago that Kids Castle was closed for renovation, it was March of last year. And at the time, the Friends of Kids Castle were working feverishly to repair our beloved castle. And along with 2,000 of our closest friends, we were finally able to open it up back up for play last fall. Now, spring is finally coming, today it's finally warm out, which means that soon kids from all over Bucks County and beyond will be arriving at Kids Castle for the first season of its new life. The mural arts walkway will be installed this spring, along with all of the personalized bricks that have been purchased by members of the community. Although we love the refurbished castle and the new racing twisty slides and the drop zone, there's still the feeling that something's missing. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Save Kids Castle Phase Two. We're calling it Build the Kingdom at Kids Castle, and it's our goal to create a playground surrounding Kids Castle that will be available for children to play regardless of age or ability. The Friends of Kids Castle have approved in concept the plan that has been presented to us by George Eli Associates in January 2014, with the understanding that there may be some changes to the plan over time, especially with regard to playground equipment availability and play equipment cost. The approved plan includes age-appropriate play structures for children as young as two, as well as several pieces that are fully accessible by wheelchair. It also includes a pirate ship play structure that has already been funded by a single donor and is set to be installed in the next few months. In addition, we would like to install port-in-place rubber surfacing to make the playground one of the largest and most fully accessible playgrounds in the area. We're currently reorganizing our committee to begin a capital fundraising campaign to fund the new play structures and the surfacing. And we're seeking out grants that can help us achieve our goal of building the kingdom. The Friends of Kids Castle is in need of volunteers that can help us with fundraising and marketing. And interested parties can contact us at savekidscastle@gmail.com. And we're asking the Board of Supervisors for an approval of the conceptual design and to continue on in our fundraising and seeking grants.
Has it been, have you vetted the plan with the Park and Rec people?
Yes, it was, so the plan as it's seen here was designed with input from kids around the community over the past year, as well as with the playground design team, company, and in conjunction with the Parks Department here in the township.
Be good Dick.
Yes.
I can't see what you're doing there. It looks very...
Sure. So, this is the castle here. Can everybody see it?
Move it to your...
Alright, so this is the castle here as it stands with the twisty slides here, the main entrance coming in here. Can you hear? You're good?
On TV.
So, over here is where the drop zone is currently installed, the brick, or the climbing wall here, and the little bridge that goes into the castle on this side. This is the pirate ship that'll be installed. Dick and his crew will be straightening out the fence on this side. This is a, this is a small tot climbing structure for some of the kids under two, or two to five.
Does that have a theme?
Um, you know, some of these pieces are somewhat interchangeable, so as we go into designing the marketing and fundraising, there's kind of a base structure and then different panels can be put on the base structure. So, it does have a theme currently, but it's really just what was put on there by the playground company.
Gotcha.
That's, can be significantly changed if we have a, say if we have a donor that's more interested in, you know, a color, kids playing with colors versus numbers, or something like that, those panels can be changed. We've got a little adventure tube over here and some like springy animals to sit on that bounce back and forth. This is a little zip line and swings. And this is the main structure. So, this is the structure that is, one of the biggest things for an inclusive playground is to allow children that are wheelchair-bound to be elevated off the ground. So, this structure goes from ground level to 12, 24, 36, and finally 48 inches off the ground via ramps. So, that's one of the biggest fully inclusives portions of the playground. And there's turnaround points at all of these different sections. There's big canopies, so we get some shade in here. This is a, like a climbing net type of structure. This in here is called a Neos, it's actually, actually an electronic play, piece of play equipment. So, it's, do you remember the old, the game Simon? So, this has like an electronic version of Simon, that it's, you know, 12 feet apart and the kids run back and forth and have to touch the buttons. There's a few different types of games that are on the system. And again, that's accessible, so the buttons are at different heights, so different ages and different abilities can be included. We've made sure there's a little piece on here called a cozy cocoon, so children that have some spatial issues have a space to go, that, you know, they can get away a little bit. So, the playground company that we worked with and that the Parks Department works with has been really, really helpful to us in designing this to be as inclusive and as, as fun for the kids as we can. So, all that being said, this is the design and concept. We know that we've got a lot of money to raise and the design could change over time. There's, you know, we have the pricing for the design as it is now, but if it takes us a year and steel prices go up, or if it takes us two years and steel prices go up significantly, there could have to be changes to what, exactly what's on here, which is why we're remaining slightly flexible.
What's the price for Phase Two?
Currently, the play equipment itself is five...
The whole plan is somewhere between $550,000 and $600,000, including that flexibility that Rachel just mentioned.
Yes.
We've already raised $143,000.
Yep.
And are almost complete, one section of all of the plan.
Right, so this, this, we've divided it into kingdoms. So, this...
Is it mono rail?
Mono rail.
But next on the list.
There is a zip, zip?
There is a zip line, there you go. So, this, this kingdom here, with the donation from the single donor that we had last month, this kingdom is nearly finished, which we're really, really excited about.
What did the pirate ship cost? If you don't remember, what was it?
It was about $38,000, $40,000.
Nice.
So, your, your strategy is as you raise enough money for different sections, you're gonna keep building? You won't wait, or will you wait till you get the whole $550,000?
So, likely we will wait until we get all of it. Because of the port-in-place, because of the installation of the port-in-place surfacing, the playground company has, and the Parks Department has recommended that we wait until we can install all of the equipment. The pirate ship will be installed because we were fortunate enough to find a single donor that could give us that money, and in talking with the Parks Department and with the playground company, they can do the installation and have enough surfacing under it to make it safe. But the installation in port-in-place is different than installation in mulch or in the wood fiber that we have. So, it's, the preference is to wait until we...
So, it's just for the pirate ship you're gonna go ahead with?
Yes.
And will you do port-in-place at the pirate ships?
No.
And that doesn't get it at any time?
It will eventually, it will when everything is done.
Okay.
But they've, we've okayed it and they've, they've made the plans and they're going to install the pirate ship so that it will be able to have port-in-place once the remainder of the playground gets it.
Sounds like a good plan. So, what's your fundraising timeline, plan do you think? Do you have that outlined yet?
We don't, so we, we do need, we do need a lot of volunteer help. We're looking for marketing and fundraising help. We're a really small committee at the moment. Small but strong. So, no, we're, we're putting those plans together.
We haven't really even reached out to any of the business community and where they're still coming in. So, once we get your approval or not, then we'll be able to formulate the fundraising campaign and start to go out into the community.
I did submit a grant to the Bucks County Visitors Bureau. Yep. So, there, hopefully that will be looked upon favorably.
We're going to the Commissioners Meeting tomorrow, so put a bid on, you know, put a word in there for, yeah. It's also helpful, I know, like, people like to see this, if they, if they spend $10,000 they get like a play area or something. So, that, that's also, keep that in back of mind when you're selling stuff.
Yes, absolutely.
People like that. Okay?
Just one last question. Is the $550,000 to $600,000 the full price, or are you reliant on the township to fund any work on this?
You mean the guys here?
Yeah.
The staff?
Yeah.
Then, that's built in, right? The cost of that, or is that in addition to?
It's in addition to $600,000. It's in addition. Do we know what that number is?
That would be our in-kind contribution.
We don't at the moment, yeah. Okay. A lot of that depends on how many volunteers show up at any given project. The more volunteers show up, the less we have to do.
Just as a comparative though, with Phase One, we were able to get over $250,000 of in-kind donation to do that type of work that we're talking about.
Okay.
Rachel, you just want to mention the murals and give a little congratulations to them.
Sure, yes, absolutely. So, the mural arts walkway will be installed on May 31st, I believe. So, we've had, I believe, 40 or 41 mural artists from around the community that have created some gorgeous murals that'll be installed along the fence line. And the bricks will be installed, the engraved bricks that people have purchased as part of the Phase One fundraising will be installed along that walkway as well. The bricks are an ongoing program that will be part of our fundraising program for Phase Two, and they'll be able to be laid in place going forward. So, they'll be, the, the murals are set to be installed pending weather, the weekend of the 17th, so they'll be out there for the community to see, and then we'll be having reception for the mural artists and the sponsors of those murals, I believe on the 31st. Do you have the time for that? I know the board received invitations in your information packet. Yeah, I'm not 100% sure, I'll have to check on that.
Thank you Rachel.
We need a motion to bless Phase Two.
Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion that, well, you guys move forward with your plans for Phase Two.
Yeah, is there a second?
I second it, we build the kingdom, yes.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for working so well with our, our group here in the township. Thank you for all your work.
We appreciate your help, it's wonderful.
Got it, thank you. Any visitors to public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ray Hendrick, Chairman of the EAC Committee, and I want to thank you for letting me come and giving you an update on the native plant and wildflower demonstration garden, which, since we're dealing with phases, Phase One began on March 22nd. We had a group of volunteers come out, we threw ourselves at the project, it was very well-received. Phase Two, we're getting some help from PICO volunteers. I didn't know they had a cadre of people who like to come out and do some projects, and they're gonna be coming out on April the 11th. Forty-one of the 52 nest boxes which I built and put in the township have been cleaned, repaired where necessary, and are up, and they are already beginning to attract the bluebirds that are coming back into their territories. And the third item I'd like to mention, the screech owl and kestrel nest boxes in Central Park have already attracted one male kestrel, and to the uninformed, that's the smallest falcon in North America, and we have not had a nesting pair in Central Park for almost 20 years, so...
How about it?
So, it's nice, if he can get a mate, we got some action.
I'm gonna go on Facebook.
Nash.com.
Do you want to just touch quickly on those signs?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Remind people that the woodland trails are...
Yes, okay. Today, April the 1st, we installed the signs that you gave us the approval on for restricting the area up in the big woods where the nesting, ground nesting birds that we're trying to encourage to come back, they, they have been up, they have caused a little bit of discussion, but I have responded to the people who were concerned, had good, good conversation with them. Matter of fact, I received an apology from one, saying that she was sorry that she caused a furor, but it's no problem. We're just trying to get residents to understand, we just want to keep the activity on the trails, we never intended to close trails, but just keep people, animals, and the like from getting in the understory where the shrubs and plant materials are that will attract these ground nesting birds.
Well, I had a question from a resident. Are they allowed through the woods if they stay on the trail?
Yes.
But they're just not allowed to roam around?
Correct.
With their dogs?
Well, but two years ago, we had, and again, young people, we were all young, you know, we enjoyed it. But their kids were playing frisbee in the, in the middle of the brush, running through it, you know, back and forth. The birds can't take that kind of pressure, so that's...
Stay on the trail.
Stay on the trail, we have no problem with it. And how people thought that the trails were closed, I do not know, but it was not our intention to do that.
Okay, got it, I will...
Thank you.
...spread the clarification. Thank you so much, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Any other comment? Next meeting, next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is May 6, 2014. We're gonna be closed on April 18th for Good Friday. Township Leaf and Yardways Collection is April 19th here, 9:00 AM to 11:00, at the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park. Arbor Day Tree Planting is April 26, 8:30 at the Century Trail at Central Park, it's also kind of off New Britton Road. Township Road Inspection, that's all the board getting together on April 24th at 3:00 PM. And we have lots to do because we have a lot of, lot of, lot of looking at the roads, this road resurfacing and so on. We're gonna have a pension, Township Pension Committee meeting on, on the same day, Thursday, April 24th at 4:30. And Touch a Truck is Saturday, May 3rd, Central Park, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes on March 18, 2014. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Questions? Comments? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is anything from the solicitor?
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Township Engineer?
Yes. At your last meeting, Mr. Bill Lair raised some concerns about some additional development at the Stone Manor Corporate Center in Warrington Township. I reached out to the Warrington Township Engineer and found that it's, Stone Manor isn't totally built out. There is still a two-story, 6,500 square foot addition to the existing house, the old house was, to have an addition built on it for offices, that was never done. And it seems that the developer now is, broached the subject with Warrington Township at that meeting about putting in apartments, I think 34 upscale apartments in that, in that area. I don't know if it's the same building. And converting the house into an additional four or five apartments. And that's what was discussed at the meeting. I talked to their engineer about additional impervious surface, he says they haven't quite gotten to that point yet, it was just a, a discussion between the developer and the board. I raised my concerns with the engineer and told him that if, if it's on the plan, if it's the impervious surface stays as what's on the approved plan, the existing stormwater management will, you know, is, is sized for it. But if they needed more impervious, to please, you know, require additional controls, and he said, you know, he would keep that under consideration once something official gets submitted. I also took a look at the outlet structure, the existing basin, found that to be, you know, fine, all the outlet control structure is clear, there's no clogging or anything, and I believe it's probably functioning as, as envisioned.
Okay. Did you have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Lair?
Yes, I talked to Mr. Lair yesterday, he called me up and had a good conversation, explained the situation to him, and he seemed to, you know, he thanked me, and I just said maybe he should reach out to Warrington and see if they would, you know, as a courtesy, just keep him abreast of what's happening there.
Thank you. Anything else Mario?
I'm sorry, just a question around, how do you stay informed of what's happening there? I mean, what communication do you have with Warrington or how this progresses and you...
Well, really nothing, because it doesn't affect the township. It was already, it's an approved plan, and I guess if, if, again, if it's, I don't really see how they can increase the impervious surface that much, because it was, it's pretty much, you know, built out. But I mean, I guess we could also ask Warrington to keep, you know, maybe the township informed if there's anything, and then we could look at it then.
Typically, our neighboring municipalities are good about letting us know if there's gonna be some development, redevelopment that borders our township.
That could impact...
They, yes, exactly. They typically keep us informed.
Thank you.
On this particular one?
And Mario knows the engineer pretty well from Warrington, so, I mean, he can continually, you know, reach out and let him know as well.
And I'm sure Mr. Lair will let us know.
Okay, anything else Mario?
That's it for now.
Okay, good. Stephanie, we saw your memo on open burning, I think that's it. Please Chief, thank you.
Trying to skip me?
Chief, I'm sorry, I tried to skip you.
I held your own though, I told her, don't forget the chief.
Just two quick things. At the January reorganization meeting, the township appointed the fire police officers for 2014. It's come to my attention that they have added an individual to their roles, and I'd like the board to just, to keep with the formality, appoint Mark T. Grove as a fire police officer for the Doylestown Township Fire Company Number One, so that we can use him in some of our traffic details throughout the township periodically.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about Mr. Grove? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thanks Chief.
The second item I have is just an update that was left here for you this evening. It's an update on the intersection improvements at 611 and, New Britton Road and 611 and Sowerman Road. We met with PennDOT on Friday, the 28th, they developed, they gave us a sketch plan, we discussed some things in it, and basically, the packet dictates or shows you what the improvement plans are with some sketches and stuff. We don't have another meeting set yet, but they're looking to hopefully get this thing up and running in June or July, depending on how quickly the orders can get going. Basically, what they're just trying to do is to narrow the, the width of the roadway to try and prevent, the way it's set up there at both intersections, it's so wide, there's so much going on right now. Motors are coming up and getting distracted for whatever reason, so with the elimination of a couple of left-turn lanes and some center lanes, they're hoping to reduce the traffic mishaps and reduce the traffic accidents in the area. There's sketch plans in there if you want to review it, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you, that's good. All right, now, open burning, we read the memo. We can put this one to bed?
I think so. If anyone had any questions, be happy to answer them, but I think it's pretty clear in the history that we have there.
I thought it was excellently written too.
Thank you, let's move on then. Ken Fab update?
I have an additional update from what I put in the packet. They are starting to remove the soil at the site in Borough and are disposing of it at the landfills, and you can see the tonnages, and they continue to excavate and backfill near the buildings, so that site is being cleaned up as we speak.
Great, thanks. Mm-hmm. Ken, you want to go into smart meters?
Yes, thanks. During, just a brief recap, during one of the outages that we had, we had met with PICO, and that's when I first learned about the smart meter implementation. And they said they would be doing all of Doylestown Township by the end of the year. And then after a couple residents heard about it, and we dug into a little bit, if you search the internet, there's a lot of information out there about smart meters and some reported issues with these smart meters. So, we said we better talk to, let's meet with PICO, find out what the issues are, are they real or not real? And so, we met on the 19th of March with them. We had five residents there, seven from the staff and from supervisors were there, so we had a, probably about a couple hour discussion going over it. Basically, what happened, when PICO started implementing the smart meters around the 2012 timeframe, they were implementing two types. One is a census and one's a landis and gear. They had implemented about 250,000 of these things, and they had, they did have some reported issues. There's like 35 different issues. So, what they did is they stopped the implementation. They said, "We're gonna go check them all," so they stopped implementing everything. And they went and they tested, more testing, through some independent agencies as well, that, to make sure that these meters were safe. After that testing, they, they felt comfortable with it, they went through tons and tons of testing, they went back and pulled all the census meters. So, they now have decided just to go with the L and G meter. So, from 2012 until now, they basically implemented a million of these meters, and they have no issues. From the time they stopped to they started back up again until now, they haven't had any issues at all. One of the key factors of why they're not having issues probably is one of the design changes they made, is that they have a sensor in the meter now, that if it starts to get hot, it shuts down right away. So, that is like a key component to re-engineering the process, to make sure if anything were to happen, they would be able to catch it as quickly as possible. The other thing they do is, some of the issues they have seen is really in the wiring and where it connects to the box, and then the meter into the, into the box itself. So, if the repair guy or the technician, when he comes out to replace it, if he sees any issues with the wiring, he will obviously contact the homeowner and say, "We have an issue here, and we'll, we'll go ahead and do this." Now, they're going ahead with their plan, a lot of people have gotten their 45-day letter already, that's the first step, they send it out to you, say, "We're gonna come in your neighborhood, we're gonna do this." And then, within that timeframe, they should be knocking on your door and say, "Hey, we're going to replace your meter." And it's like a 15-minute swap-out type of thing, so, this is not a, residents don't have an option here to opt out, you will do this, or you won't get electricity, well, they'll try to work with you first, but if you don't, then you won't get, you won't have a meter. So, I think the group felt pretty good about it, where we're at, and so they're, they're going to proceed with it.
Okay, thanks.
Question, comment?
Sure.
10:30 this morning.
Yeah, please take...
This morning, I had a technician from PICO installing the new meter.
So, they, I got the letter, I thought, like, two weeks ago, and they were there this morning. Yep. And I discussed it with them a little bit, and the technician seemed comfortable, just said, "We don't have a meter man anymore, they're gonna be able to read your meter from the office." I said, "Oh, swell, you know, that's, that's what it is." But it's installed, it, it was less than 15 minutes, in and out, he was gone. Good, thank you Rick.
Go ahead.
Where do we find the information exactly that they're gathering?
Guess we'd have to get that from PICO.
Yeah, they gave us a handout that we have, and we've, we can send it to you if you'd like, the front office staff can do that, we've responded to some...
Yeah, it's, I can give it to you right here, I've got it.
Anything else Ken?
No, that's it, thank you.
Sean?
Just, just one thing, to comment on Ken's presentation, I mean, it was really interesting. Thanks for, to Ken for calling it together, because if you pay attention to the internet, and I don't recommend doing that anyhow, most things, your head will spin with all the information and stories and all, but that was really informative, so, thanks for having it. I have nothing else to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Madam?
Nothing for me tonight.
Couple of things.
Moving on.
You mentioned about the touch a truck and, and people come very, very early, 9:30 or even earlier to go to touch a truck. So one of the benefits, if you come a little bit earlier, you'll have a bird walk chance with Ray at 8 o'clock. So you can meet Ray, do the bird walk, he'll be done at 10 with you. You can go touch trucks and then you can go to Kid's Castle. It's a great day, it really is. Rachel mentioned the murals on the Kid's Castle and the bricks. So you'll be able to get a brick and you could put your child's name on it. And as you're walking around looking at the murals, your child can look down and see his or her name, and that would just be a great gathering point for the kids. And I saw a few people excited. I have some blanks up here, so at the end of the meeting, I'll be glad to pass them out for the bricks. I just want to thank Focus MX again. They, they're coming out to the TAB meetings now and they're working with our TAB board to increase the exposure of social media. Focus MX is the one that did our website, and they just do a great job. So I just wanted to give them a thank you. And last, the planning commission. We had the Grasso Sketch Plan eloquently presented by Mr. Murphy. No?
It wasn't eloquent, I think, what we're trying to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Presented. And there were a lot of issues, there were residents there and they had their concerns, but it was a good meeting. All the concerns were addressed and notes taken. And I think we're going to be, in the near future, saying Sketch Plan Two. And we'll go on from there. That is all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Tomorrow at Taylor Home at 4:30, commissioners are having their regular meeting. And so Doylestown Township is welcome, encouraged to attend. 4:30 tomorrow at Taylor's Children's Home, 601 New Britton Road. The other thing, Steph, Ashley and I attended a very nice presentation by Mayor Ron Strauss, and I was there on behalf of Doylestown Township, respecting, honoring the folks RSVP for the Bucks County Aireon Aging. They, the RSVP are the retired seniors volunteering, volunteer program. And they were there, they were being honored, and it was a very nice event. So thanks to Mayor Strauss for putting that together. And we issued proclamation last meeting, so it was very nice. So thank you to them and thanks to the volunteers at the Aireon Aging. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the 457 Plan. Rick, you had an opportunity to review the plan that was tabled from the last meeting?
Yes, I threw emails, communication with Stephanie and Chris Engelberg, who's in the back. And I think he is going to give us a two minute, five minute?
Two minute.
Two and a half minute.
Chris, do you want to say something? You're here. We might as well give you the mic.
Cheers. Introduce myself, Chris Engelberg with Burn Wealth Consulting. We're a municipal pension consulting firm that does defined benefit, 457 and drop. We've been doing a 457 here at Doylestown for the last three and a half years. One thing I want to say right up front is we deal with 34 municipal pension plans. And I want to compliment your staff, starting with your township manager, extremely professional. Believe me, I've been in many townships and boroughs, and this is the first time you're meeting me and seeing who I am, but I've dealt with a lot of municipal government and you have probably some of the finest staff that I've been, been associated with. So with that, we're transitioning the 457 Plan from our old firm to our new firm. It's a very innovative 457 Plan. We're extremely service oriented. We make sure that the participants in the plan are contacted regularly. We make ourselves available. And a lot of them contact us for information on what they should be doing, et cetera. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Engelberg. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions?
No.
We really appreciate you taking the time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And thanks for the comments about our staff. We like them.
Yeah, you guys don't hear a lot, and us professionals at vendors in other areas, we see it, and whenever we see something good, we always want to say it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the plan? Thank you.
Move to approve.
I'll second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, the Everett Trust RGA Investment Fund, Old Dublin Pike, number 360, conditional use approved.
If I may, I would first of all incorporate the township's file, including the application, into the record. Notice that this conditional use hearing appeared in the intelligence room on March 23rd and again on March 30th. The plan before you tonight laid the conditional use was prepared by Gilmore and Associates, was dated October 10, 2013, and was last revised November 8, 2013. The application submitted seeks conditional use approval to utilize the B-15 use, which permits single-family attached dwellings in connection with use of historic structures. Is there anyone in the public that would like to be a party to these proceedings? I see no hands. So Mr. Murphy, have a presentation to make before I get into conditions.
Thank you. A year ago this week, we first met with your staff to discuss the prospect of redeveloping the site in question for a B-15 use, as Mr. Garten indicated. We spent several meetings with the staff to revise, reconsider, further revise the plan. And ultimately, when everyone felt comfortable enough that the sketch satisfied the issues raised by the township staff, we made a formal submission. The hearing tonight is the culmination of a year's worth of back and forth meetings with your planning commission at the sketch plan stage, meeting with your zoning hearing board, and more recently, meeting with your planning commission and staff about the preliminary subdivision plans that will follow the conditional use aspect tonight. With me tonight to testify is Greg Glitzer. To my immediate left, he is the project engineer from Gilmore. And subsequently, you'll hear from Jeff Marshall, the president of the Heritage Conservancy, who has been the consultant on the project with regard to the historic elements of the plan. As Mr. Garten indicated, last October 7, we made a formal conditional use application to the township, and it's that application that's first on tap for tonight to consider. If we want to swear in Greg, then we can move quickly.
Why don't we swear in Mr. Marshall at the same time?
Jeff?
So we swear in Professor about being able to be the truth, have we yet?
I do.
I do.
Greg, as I indicated, you're the project engineer from Gilmore for this plan?
Correct.
And you've testified innumerable times before this body in the past?
Yes, I have.
So I think, can we waive his qualification?
We certainly will recognize Mr. Glitzer as a professional engineer and an expert.
Thanks. The owner of the property of this, of this application is RGA Investment Fund 5 LT, correct?
Correct.
And the conditional use application and the plan that accompanied it was prepared in part by you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How many parcels are involved with this application?
There's actually two tax parcels, 948-23 and 948-10.
And however there are two parcels, the property bears one address, 360 Old Dublin Pike?
Correct, and is showing one deed as well.
And the property is owned R1 Residential, correct?
Correct.
And what's the present use of the property?
Currently, it's a residentially used property. There is a significant residential dwelling on the site. There is a barn, there's several outbuildings as well. The board will recognize that as the site of the last year's designer house for Doylestown Hospital.
Right.
Referred to locally as the Clement Doyle House, although Mr. Marshall probably will correct that in his testimony, but that's sort of the local reference to it.
How big is the parcel?
The parcel is 9.133 acres gross area. And when you subtract out the right of way lines of Old Dublin Pike and Pine Run Road, the base site area is then 8.767 acres.
What is proposed as part of the redevelopment of the site?
As you said before, it's being proposed for a use B-15, which is a use that's titled "Single Family Attached Dwellings in Conjunction with the Use of Historic Resources." So townhouses in addition to the existing house that we retained, and the conversion of the barn on the site as an adaptive reuse for residents.
So break down for the board the number of new units versus the number of existing and add in the converted board.
One existing dwelling to remain in the existing house. The barn is being converted to a residence, and there are seven new townhouse units for a total of nine dwelling units on site.
Okay. And you made reference to the fact that we are operating under, proposing to operate under the B-15 option, correct?
Correct.
And aside from the characterization of the house and the barn as historic, which Mr. Marshall will cover, let's talk about the conditional use element because the option of B-15 is the conditional use element of this application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's review with the board, if you would, the requirements of the B-15 option.
Okay, this can be found in zoning ordinance section 175-16, dash, subparagraph 15. And there are a series of planning and dimensional standards. The first is that the dwelling shall be arranged in groups or clusters and not in long rows parallel to the street. No more than four such buildings shall be attached to any one group.
And do you meet that requirement?
We do. We actually have, our biggest unit is a, is a group of three townhouses, but we have two groups of two.
Okay.
Next requirement is to create architectural interest. The layout and character of the housing, fronting streets, variations and setbacks, materials and design shall be encouraged. As a bare minimum, a two-foot variation in front setbacks shall occur every second dwelling. We actually have every dwelling offset from each other by at least four feet.
Okay.
We comply there. Uses required to be served by public water and a public centralized sewer system, both of which are provided. Now, next we get into subsection D, minimum dimensional area and yard requirements.
We meet all of those without going into each individual one?
We do.
Okay.
Next criteria is that allows for condominium ownership. This plan actually proposes fee simple ownership of the, of the lots with the homeowners association to own the open space. So we comply there. In addition to the individual unit setbacks, there are overall tract setbacks for the groups of buildings. We comply with those.
There is one requirement, however, that we did not meet, and we disclosed that and discussed it with the township staff a year ago, correct?
Correct. That's the overall minimum tract area of 10 acres. And as a tract area, I mean, base site area.
Right. And you've indicated at the outset that we have 9.133 acres, correct?
And actually, in our base site area is 8.767. That's correct.
All right. And notwithstanding that failure to comply with that requirement, the township staff gave us encouragement to proceed along the B-15 route, provided that we could secure support from the zoning hearing board.
Correct. And so that was our first major application was to the zoning hearing board.
Mr. Garten, I don't care how you want to mark it, A1?
A1. That would be your copy of the zoning hearing board decision dated August 5.
That is correct, which I'll provide to you at the conclusion.
It will be received. And I would note for the record that that decision granted the relief requested with respect to the overall site tract size.
And with regard to the other tract requirements that you made reference to in subsection G of B-15, all the other tract requirements have been met, correct?
Correct. There's another corollary that came out of the overall tract size, which is the maximum density.
Right.
Zoning ordinance for use B-15 requires a maximum net buildable density of two acres. Actually, when you do the math, we have 2.05, so the minimum's increase that goes along with the slightly reduced base site area.
Correct.
Minimum open space ratio is required to be 50%. We exceed that, it's 63.5%. We're under the impervious surface ratio required to be 40% in the R1 district. We're actually at 36.7%. Homeowners Association owning open spaces is the next requirement or allowance, really, in the, in the ordinance. Takes to the requirement for architectural renderings that are reflective and consistent with the historic structures on the site. This is evolved a little bit from what the planning commission saw, they saw an earlier edition, but this is our single unit of, three unit building on the site. And Mr. Marshall will talk a little bit about some of the salient features of the buildings, especially the barn that we're trying to replicate in these, in these buildings.
And we will mark, we have a paper copy of the easel exhibit. We'll mark that as exhibit A2. And without belaboring some of the more general requirements, Mr. Glitzer, of the ordinance of conditional use, the, the health safety and welfare, the general consistency of the plan with the ordinance, comprehensive plan consistency, all those general requirements have been satisfied as well by this point, correct?
It's my professional opinion that they have.
Aye.
Can a planning commission agree? Did they not?
They did, didn't they? And finally, the final B-15 requirement is that the use contain a structure or structures identified on the township's historic resource inventory, which it does.
And that's the reason that we're going to call up Mr. Marshall next.
Any questions to Mr. Glitzer before he sits down?
I do, I do. Just for information, there are two separate parcels, have they been used as one owner?
Yes.
For a period of time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, there's a review comment that suggests that they are, need to be consolidated. It's our belief that they really are. They're merged.
You've been acting that way.
Yes.
That's correct.
I see no other questions?
Mr. Marshall?
We recognize Mr. Marshall as President of Heritage Conservancy and an expert in historic preservation of structures as well as other features.
But he's had cataract surgery this morning, so he's looking a little goofy today.
Oh.
I look over there at you. It's okay.
Are you in pain?
No.
Only actually him.
Well, that we understand.
Can you get that?
Mr. President, you have been acting as a consultant on this project with regard to your documentation and study of the historic structures on the site.
Correct.
Briefly describe and will mark as exhibit A3, a historical documentation and architectural analysis that you prepared June of last year at the outset of the project in which you updated last month, correct? And please describe generally for the board what structures on the site have received that designation.
There is a very large stone house, which people are familiar with, large columns. It's a early 19th century federal style house in which in the early 20th century, the big columns were put on and an addition made to the westerly side. The addition was designed by a Doylestown architect named A. Oscar Martin, who is well, I guess, well represented in literature. He's, his papers are at the National Park Service, has them, in Library of Congress. He's been studied at the Merchant Museum has an exhibit about him. The Merchant Museum has his papers, and he is recognized as a local expert in architecture. So a part of the significance of the property is its association with Oscar Martin's early 20th century alteration and expansion. Prior to that, the original house and barn, which is also a unique stone structure, were built about 1811 and 1814 respectively. They're rare in that both houses are dated. They're even more rare that Mrs. Swartzlander's name's on top of the date stone instead of Mr. Swartzlander, which is virtually unique, but it's one of the odd factors of this property. But both the house and the barn are significant historic structures. They may have not been labeled such in their initial inventory done many years ago because the date stones are not visible from the public way or thoroughfare. And the fact that until we were commissioned to do this study, the relationship with Oscar Martin was not evident. That property issue, as you heard, was originally known as the Clement Doyle property. Clement Doyle, in fact, owned the land, but the buildings were constructed by the Swartzlander family. The Swartzlander family is prominent in Doylestown. There's a Swartzlander building in downtown Doylestown, also designed by Oscar Martin. There was a mill behind where Paint Color is today, so the family was relatively wealthy and can build these nice structures because they made money in the milling business.
And the township has previously recognized both the house and the barn as having those[1727.29] properties you just described?
Yes.
Because they are on the historic township inventory, correct? Okay. Which in and of itself qualifies to apply the B-15 option.
Yes.
Okay. You've also, describe what's going to happen to both the house and the barn. They're going to be preserved?
They are going to be preserved and adaptively reused, the barn in particular. And the house is going to be a single-family dwelling. The barn plans are not complete yet, but the significant features of the barn, we have made recommendations to the property owner, and are analyzing what they are. Difficulty in a barn is getting light and space and everything in such a huge volume, but we are hopeful that it will be a compatible adaptive reuse, and the building will retain its architectural integrity.
And you've heard Mr. Glitzer make reference to the fact that you've had a chance to comment on the exterior elevation of the new structures that are going to surround the house and the barn.
What we had suggested, and what you see here, is that the taller portions of the building be stone to replicate the stone gables of the barn, and the very pronounced stone gable that you see on the cover of the report.
On the side of the house.
On the side of the house, which is the gable or the triangular point.
Right.
And then there are other structures on the property, in fact, attached to this house, smaller ancillary structures that are frame construction. So, with that in mind, that's what the renderings try to represent.
The vertical of some of the garages with the vertical siding.
Represent the frame siding on some of the other structures, and some of the ancillary structures attached to the main house.
Okay. And any other questions from the board?
I assume, Mr. Marshall, you would testify that everything except for the report dated June 23, last revised March 2014 is true and correct?
I would.
Okay. Any questions from the board as to?
I just have one question. So, I see just in what you put together, there's some smaller things, like the spring house ruins. What happens to something like that? I mean, does that remain?
Those could be on the private lot owned by the main house.
Okay, so that's the property owners.
It will be, but Greg can comment quickly about that.
Yeah, that spring house and the ruins around it remain, and actually, it's a delineated wetland inside there, where the spring comes out of the ground, so we think that's an attractive feature. That will stay. There was a framed carriage house and a block garage, cement block or concrete block garage that are being removed.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mr. Marshall, is it your opinion that this development, the B-15 development, would be the best and greatest use for preserving this property?
I think it enhances it, and part of the flow of the property, as you can see, is designed from Old Dublin Pike. You'll see the house and you'll see the barn, so to the extent that it shows off the facade of the barns, and doesn't hide them with other additions, or doesn't hide them from the primary elevation from the public thoroughfare, I think is a key aspect. What you want to do, I believe, and what you've done in your ordinance, is to have people, you know, preserve the past but embrace the future, as I read on your website. This is the best way to do that, because you're trying to preserve what you can yet, allow for the adaptive reuse of the barn and the use of the property in the 21st century, when people aren't going to farm it anymore.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If the board was inclined, you could approve the conditional use, subject to three conditions. One, receipt of final land development subdivision approval from the Township Board of Supervisors at a later date. Two, compliance with the zoning hearing board decision dated August 5, 2013. And lastly, continued compliance with the requirements of the Doylestown towns with zoning ordinance and conditional use criteria as set forth herein and as set forth in Ms. Pally's planning code.
Does anyone want to entertain such a, board will entertain such a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve as set forth by Mr. Garten? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other consideration, questions? Anybody out there? No? You good, Mr. Henry? Did you have a question?
No, no.
Oh, you're good? Calling the question, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Good. Mr. Murphy can remain there while we go through the next part of this, which is the preliminary land development subdivision plan. As you know, the applicant proposes to consolidate tax parcels 9-48-10, 9-48-23, and then he proposes to abolish certain outbuildings, as you've heard, to preserve the historic barn and the historic house on the site. The applicant proposes to erect seven additional attached dwellings. With the existing barn and house, there will be a total of nine dwelling units on the site. Plans were prepared by Gilmore and Associates, were dated October 10, 2013, and were last revised November 8, 2013. Your planning commission recommended approval, subject to conditions at their February 24, 2014 meeting. If the board was inclined to approve the preliminary plan, following conditions would apply. One, compliance with the conditions imposed as part of the conditional use approval you recently approved, including compliance with the zoning hearing board decision, compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson letter dated November 21, 2013, and the approval of the various waivers that are noted in that letter that I will regurgitate to go through A through N. Next, the applicant to pay a fee in lieu of recreation in accordance with the township's ordinance. Next, applicant to make an off-site contribution of $1,000 for each of the 10 new dwelling units, which will be paid at the time of the...
Eight.
Eight, pardon me, eight, I said eight.
I meant eight.
I got eight written there. Eight new dwelling units to be paid at the time of the funding of development financial security agreements. Next, the documents establishing the homeowners association shall be reviewed and approved by the township solicitor. The board of supervisors should now decide if you want the cul-de-sac to be a private street maintained by the homeowners association, and I suspect you do. I see nods, yes?
Yeah.
And Mr. John makes that recommendation as well?
Also, do you want the open space to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association?
Yes.
I see yes is there.
Mr. John?
Yes.
He says yes as well.
The township will accept dedication of the right-of-way area between the legal and ultimate right-of-way of Pine Run Road and Old Dublin Pike, except to the extent that PennDOT accepts dedication of some. Receipt of all permits and approvals many agencies having jurisdiction, including Conservation District, TEP, and PennDOT. Next, confirmation that from the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority that the lots can be served by public water, and confirmation from the municipal authority, lots can be served by public water. Next, compliance with the Boucher and James report dated December 2, 2013, except to the extent waivers were granted. Next, compliance with the Michael Baker report dated December 4, 2013. Next, compliance with the Penoni Associates letter dated December 4, 2013. Next, compliance with the Code Enforcement Memorandum dated December 6, 2013. Next, funding and execution development financial security agreements. And lastly, I need to advise you that there will be a bike path constructed as part of the site, but at a location, in order to preserve certain trees, the bike path will leave the right-of-way and will go into an easement. And you need to understand, if you don't have a problem with that, it'll go into an easement granted to the township, but the bike path is part of the township's system, so it'll be maintained by the township. Is that an issue? I assume not.
No.
No.
So, Mr. Murphy, do you agree to all those conditions?
If we're ending this quickly before I mail away, yes.
It's our coercive effect of keeping it really hot in here. Were there any considerations for the EAC? I know that Mr. Henry...
The bad boxes. They agreed to that.
Nope.
They were all addressed, I think.
Yep.
Any other park and recreation issues or concerns?
We're good.
Okay, will Mr. Marshall be staying on as a architect control consultant?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good then.
You motion, give a second.
Was, just one question, was there a question about the name of the street?
That was addressed at the planning commission.
That'd be good, yeah.
That's all done?
Yeah.
Snyder Way, I think, no.
Is there a motion to approve as set forth by the, Mr. Garten? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, and I do appreciate the cooperation and the name change and also the frustration that Greg went through. I really appreciate it. I think everybody's going to be happy to, it's a much better...
It is.
I know it was frustrating, I could tell, but thank you.
It was, it was fine.
Well, thanks anyway.
Good job.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall, Mr. Glitzer, Mr. Murphy, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next thing, you do have a letter of extension from Penn Color, asking you to accept the extension to June 1, 2014.
Is there a motion to accept?
So, move.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The DCNR grant resolution.
This is a project that the Bike and Hike Committee is submitting to DCNR for the extension of the trail from Upper State Road to the New Britain train station. I know you've seen the presentation from Tom Kelso a number of times, and heard from Bike and Hike, and we intend to submit that grant on the due date later this month, and need a resolution from the board.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That means I have to sign it. All in favor?
Aye.
I can do that. Good night. Take care of yourself, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you very much.
Drops, eye drops. Where are we?
Refinance.
Yeah, this is the one I had trouble with. Determine the current loan fixed rate bond rate.
Yes, this is the refinancing of our bond from when we purchased Central Park. We have the last about four years.
Well, actually, it's not a bond, it's a loan from Down Valley.
It's the bond, I know, I was getting there.
That's why I made sure I let her finish.
The original bond that we transferred in 2008 to the Duffer loan that we now have, and we have the opportunity to reduce our interest rate from 3.51% to about 0.85, to 9.2, depending on what comes up tomorrow morning when they go to put it all through. The fees, which are about 0.4, rolled into everything. We'll still have a principal and term do not change. We still have about 1.526 to pay off, which we'll have done in 2017, but we will, over the next three years, save about $75,000 that'll go back.
Just with the change in the interest rate?
Yeah.
That's a net saving.
Just with the change in the interest rate, it's a net saving, so it's good, good all the way around.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moving that rapidly.
And it was, the staff did a great job, Ken Wallace did a great job. It was vetted by the Ways and Means Committee, bounced around a little bit, and then resolved, and so it's a good thing.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the Upper State and Alms House Road signal timing modification.
With the opening of the Parkway, we have found that the volume of traffic on Upper State and Alms House Road has changed. As everyone knows, when you read the PennDOT permits, you kind of have Main Street, Side Street. Alms House was always considered Side Street. With the change in the opening of the Parkway, things have shifted a little bit, and so we need to change the timing on that traffic signal. PennDOT is now requiring that any timing change, permit changes, require this new permit process and resolution by the board of supervisors.
Well, has it become a Main Street now, or is it lessened as a Side Street?
It's become less of a Side Street, more of a Main Street in terms of traffic and the volume and the timing, so we need to make that adjustment to the timing, so that it clears Alms House Road a little faster than it has been.
Okay. So, the Parkway has just made it more difficult for people on the state?
Because people can come down, not for Upper State, but they've really kind of lessened on Upper State, which used to be where all the traffic was, and now we're seeing a lot more traffic on the Alms House heading to the Parkway up on like Lower State Road to access it. So, we need to make those timing adjustments.
Barb, this was brought up at, during the Traffic Advisory Committee meetings, and I believe the whole initial push behind this modification was through the committee itself.
Okay. I'm totally okay with it. I'm just, one more yet?
I don't, I haven't seen the exact counts.
Wonderful way the Parkway is giving it.
I know Penoni went out and did the counts, and I'm not sure how much it shifted, but it did shift significantly to create a change.
All right, so motion to approve the application for signal change. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What are they going to do about 3:13?
What road's that?
The Parkway coming off into Paul's Corner. Another wonderful gift from the Parkway.
I think they're going to ask to relocate the farm complex somewhere.
My house too.